Before I move on to the main items of business, just like to introduce the team in front of me. The planning team here is Beth Howland-Smith, who takes up her post as Development Manager on Monday, Rebecca Clark, Chris French, Marie Clark and Barry Devlin from the legal side over there. And alongside me here from Democratic Services, I have Amy Ann Kumwa, who's joining us for the first time this evening. The first item for us to look at is the minutes of the last meeting. They have been on the table in front of you there for the last 30 minutes. Are you happy that I sign those as a true record?
Three.
Thank you very much. Amy, any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from Councillor Mike Band and Councillor Richard Seaborn.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Henry has declared a non-perceivable interest in Item A1, as she is a member of US Parish Council.
Thank you. Any questions from the public or members?
None received, Chairman.
Right. Officers, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting that we should know about? Surely good. We've got a lot to get through tonight, so this is all very good. Performance against government targets. Either Marie or Chris is going to introduce those to us. I think we have got them on an update sheet here, but if you'd like to run through them, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman. As you see, there are two tables here on the update sheet. One of the tables, we won't have changed significantly since we last saw those tables. The table at the top shows the performance against the speed target. And as you can see, the headline is down the bottom there. At majors is 95.35 and non-majors is 97.72%. And those are both above the target, which is set at the top there. So that's excellent. And the second table shows the performance against the quality measure, which is the performance against the number of appeals, percentage of appeals allowed. And as you can see down the bottom there, we're below the number, which means we're meeting the target there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Just to inform you that in the event of any site inspections being necessary as a result of tonight's meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 10th of September, at a time to be agreed. And members, as you are well aware, we have an awful lot to get through this meeting and we'll have central waiting to come in at quarter past seven, hopefully. So could I ask you not to go on too long? But of course, we need a good debate, but please avoid repeating anything that other members may have said. And thank you very much. So the first item for consideration this evening is Item A1, reference WA 2017 2388, The Bull's Head, the Street U-Hurst. And Chris, would you like to introduce that application?
Thank you, Chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of five dwellings following a demolition of existing outbuildings and an extension to the main building, along with extensions and alterations to the public house. There's one update, which is contained within the addendum report, which relates to incorrect parish council comments. The final comments of the parish council dated the 17th of May are contained within the officer's report, but it's the initial comments that were missing in error. So those have been added to the addendum. We can now run through the details of the application. This is the location plan. The application site itself is outlined in red and it occupies a corner plot of a junction between the street, which is around here, and the Oakley Road, which is running to the top of that, the top of the site there, to the north. The site is located within the U-Hurst Conservation Area and is occupied by the Bull's Head Public House. And this is an aerial photograph of the application site. And you can clearly see the garden area for the public house to the south here and the green, the small green area there to the west. The buildings directly to the south of the garden are a commercial building, which is located here, Old Ford, the Old Ford. And the Old Ford Cottage, which is to the right there, is a residential dwelling. This is the existing site plan. Vehicle access is currently available from both the Oakley Road around here and also from the street, which is down here. And there's parking along both frontages at the moment. And the proposal would result in the demolition of the single-storey side element, which is on the right-hand side of the building, as shown at the moment on this plan here, along with the outbuilding to the north of the site, which I'm highlighting there. This is the proposed block plan. A row of five terrace dwellings is proposed, set back from the street frontage. Bin stores are shown in purple there, in the rear gardens. And parking was originally proposed to the front, but has been removed, is now set back from the frontages at the rear of the site. Eleven spaces are proposed for the five dwellings and 22 are retained for the public house. These are the proposed front and rear elevations. The top slide shows how the proposal would appear from the street. The slide at the bottom shows the appearance of the rear of the site. The design of the buildings contains a mixture of materials, gable ends and a variation in design, which breaks up the overall form of the building. This slide shows a comparison between the current proposal and the application, which was referenced 2016 0822, which was refused by the committee. Of note, the 2016 application was refused for three reasons. Firstly, representing a cramped form of development. Secondly, the harm to the character and designated and undesigned heritage assets. And thirdly, relating to housing mix. The separation between the buildings, between the dwellings and the Bull's Head has been increased, past that refused scheme to around 9.5 metres. Furthermore, the building is now set further from the southern boundary than was previously the case. And you can see the comparison between the two there. This slide also shows a comparison in terms of the street seen from the street, between the current proposal and that which was previously considered, with the current proposal being that on the top of the slide. These are the proposed elevations. The front elevation is at the top left-hand side of the slide. You can see the mixture of roof heights, stormer windows, front porches. There's a number of chimneys on the building, which is also considered to be a positive feature. The building would have a maximum height of approximately 9.2 metres. And these are the proposed floor plans. You can see the mix has been improved past that previously considered. And now there are a number of smaller units, so it's four two-bedroom properties and one three-bedroom dwelling. These are the proposed elevations of the public house. So the elevation to the top is the side elevation. You can see the rear extension there, which would have a depth of approximately seven metres into the rear of the site. And these are the proposed floor plans of the public house. You can see the new garden area directly to the rear is shown on the plan and the proposed rear extension is directly to the rear here, next to the new kind of garden area. And we've got a number of photographs from the site. So these are taken from the green area directly to the west of the application site. So this is the public house. The area to be demolished is on the right-hand side there, in the kind of darker element of the building. And the garden for the public house is further to the right, which you can see from the photograph slightly lower on that slide. And these are some further photographs. The one on the top left is taken from a similar position, looking towards the garden where the dwellings are proposed. And the one on the right-hand side is taken from the back of the garden of the public house, looking towards the rear of Old Ford Cottage. The photograph on the bottom is taken from the Oakley Road, looking at the existing outbuilding, which would be demolished, and is the point where the new access is proposed into the car park for the public house. This slide splits the main determining issues into matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment. On the left-hand side, we have the principle of development. This site's within the settlement boundary and allows for, the proposal allows for the retention of the public house, which is a community facility. Therefore, the principle is considered to be acceptable. With regards to housing mix, the mix of the proposal is for smaller units than was previously considered and represents a more desirable mix than was considered previously. With regards to trees, it's noted that some trees will be lost and that a new planting scheme could be secured via landscaping condition. In terms of parking, access and highway safety, the application is considered to be acceptable, as is the case with ecology. Turning to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side, the application is considered to be acceptable with regards to the impact on the conservation area. Although less than substantial harm is identified, this is in officers' opinion outweighed by the public benefits of the scheme. Therefore, sorry, furthermore, the design and spacing around the building is improved past that which was previously considered and for the reasons set out in the officer's report, the application's recommended for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. This application is subject to public speaking and I would firstly like to invite Roger Zucca, one of the Objectives, to speak. I understand the procedure has been explained to you. You have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
I live at Old Ford Cottage and this proposed development is only one metre away from my boundary fence. However, curiously, Old Ford Cottage was yet again being omitted from the proposed block plan, but I understand now it's on the slide plan. I do apologise for any confusion, whereas the other neighbouring property, Ballendine, has been clearly shown. Having read the officer's report, I believe it is largely based on opinion rather than fact. The report fails to address the reasons given by the council for refusing the previous proposed development in 2017. The new proposed development of five houses does not deal with the cramped form of development, but rather adds to previous concerns regarding the overdevelopment of the site by virtue of its height and mass. I also cannot agree with the officer's statement on the lack of impact on Old Ford Cottage. There would be a material loss of light, as the rear aspect of Old Ford Cottage faces north-west and is completely reliant on the open space of the Bull's Head garden to provide the house interior with daylight. The height and width of the proposed development would not only block out light, but also remove all late afternoon and evening sunlight. I consider the closeness of the proposed dwellings would also result in a loss of privacy and have an unacceptable, overbearing impact. I respectfully suggest a site visit would perhaps enable councillors to see this reality for themselves. I believe this proposed development fails to guarantee the implementation of plans to develop the public house. The owners, alloys, properties openly admit their intention is to market the pub to a new operator once the housing sales have been realised. Granting this application would finally remove any opportunity for an alternative operator to realise the potential of successfully developing the pub with his garden and function rooms intact. Along with local residents, I consider the disadvantages of this proposal far outweigh any suggested benefits. Finally, the proposed development would cause irreparable and substantial harm to a much-valued community asset in this designated conservation area of our village. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Zucca. Now invite Ian Davis, representing U-Hurst Parish Council. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
My name is Ian Davis and I am a U-Hurst Parish councillor. A healthy, sustainable village community such as U-Hurst is defined by shop, its churches, a village school, recreation facilities, a network of support for the vulnerable societies and clubs and a village pub. The parish is committed to preserving and enhancing all of these. The parish council is not convinced by the officer's conclusion on page 33 of the report before you this evening. The proposed development satisfactorily enhances and supports the retention of the public house. The refurbishments, alterations and extensions to it are supported by the viability report should result in its retention as an asset of community value. The NPPF seeks to ensure the retention and development of community facilities should result in retention is not the same as ensure. This is insufficient reassurance for our village community, since there are no guarantees that the redevelopment of the pub garden will act as an enabling development for the refurbishment of the pub. It is naive to rely upon the developer's goodwill to divert profit from the sale of the new homes to secure the pub's future. The proposal as structured is nothing more than an asset stripping exercise to develop the pub garden with no tangible benefit to the village in return for the loss of the asset of community value, the pub garden, and the associated harm to the conservation area, a heritage asset. The developer's own viability report concludes, "I would expect the Bull's Head to represent a viable trading prospect into the future, assuming that the redevelopment and refurbishment is undertaken to a high standard." Florets commissioned by the council agree with the same caveat, that the housing and refurbishment are completed by the developer. As structured, this potential permission is a bad deal for the borough and a bad deal for the village. It would be a simple matter to have negotiated a condition with the developer which sought the completion of the pub refurbishment works prior to occupation of the fourth or fifth housing unit. This is no different to conditions which seek to guarantee delivery of affordable housing in larger residential schemes. Why has this not been explored? If the reason is it is not viable, then that sounds an alarm bell and suggests that the inward investment hoped for will not materialise in any case. Officers do not believe that it is reasonable to link the two aspects of this proposal. They consider that the housing element is acceptable on its own merits. How can this be, given retained policy HE8 and the NPPF require the development to preserve or enhance the character of the conservation area? Clearly, it is not preserved, as the intention is to build five houses on important open space. We know from officers that less than substantial harm, a significant level of harm to the layman, is caused by the development, and so there is no enhancement. So how is the development acceptable? Perhaps it comes down to balance. On the one hand, we have the loss of a community asset, the pub garden, less than substantial harm to a designated heritage asset, the conservation area, loss of open space, loss of the majority of trees on the site, loss of the Skittle Alley, intensification of traffic, questionable vehicle access, replacement of a country pub's garden with an urban courtyard. Balanced against this is the windfall of five new houses, none of which is affordable, all in the context of a proven five-year housing land supply and an emerging neighbourhood plan which is committed to deliver at least the remainder of the parish allocation. An untilted balance here does not come down in favour of consent. With 18 pubs closing each week, we have every opportunity here to ensure that U-Hurst Village Pub does not become a statistic. It is entirely within the gift of decision-makers this evening to either insist upon a condition or failing that, refuse the application and preserve the site's assets until such time as a genuine plan for the survival of the essential community asset comes forward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Now invite David Fraser on behalf of the supporters. Good evening, Mr. Fraser.
Can I just check, you can hear me okay? Can I just check, you can hear me okay on this? Thank you very much. Members, good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you. My name is David Fraser and I'm a partner of Allo Properties U-Hurst Limited with applicants and the builders. The planning application before you has been the subject of extensive pre-app discussions with Councillor Val Henry and the officers of the council to overcome the three objections raised against the previous application. Scheme before you now is of an acceptable height and scale and quantum of development, protects and enhances the character and appearance of the conservation area and provides an appropriate mix of dwelling comprising smaller cottages, four with two bedrooms and one with three bedrooms. The dwellings are designed as a terrace of cottages in the Surrey vernacular that respects the scale and character of this part of the conservation area. The roofscape is varied and the use of traditional materials and detailing are fully supported by the council's conservation and planning officers. The visual gap between the new cottages and the Bull's Head is now nine metres. This is a significant gap. All parking and the hard-surfaced areas have been removed from the front of the Bull's Head and the proposed cottages where it faces onto the street. This is to visually enhance the village setting. The officer's report is both clear and to the point and sets out the issues at the heart of the new planning application before you tonight. I thank the officers for their hard work, both at the pre-app stage and now in agreeing the scheme before you, which is recommended for approval subject to 23 conditions. As addressed by your previous two speakers, we're very well aware of the historic concerns raised both by residents and through the parish council regarding the future of the Bull's Head. However, the pub is to remain and will still be a feature of this part of the village. This has been explained by the committee report. The scheme proposes significant visual enhancement of the pub, car park and frontage surface treatment that will lead to a more attractive presence in the conservation area. These improvements are the subject of conditions seven to 10 to ensure that changes to the access and parking arrangements are in place before the development is first occupied. It was made very clear to us as a company, from the professional advice that we have taken, that car parking spaces are an important part of the commercial mix required to ensure the success of the pub. The previous scheme proposed to you a reduced number of spaces at 16. We revised this as suboptimal, so have allowed for 22 spaces, including a disabled space. This, combined with increased internal covers, 62 to 76, makes the pub more attractive to an owner-operator, as cited by the Savills viability report of 27th November. The professional advisers we are working with include the former CEO of a mid-tier managed country pub chain, who has physically and operationally designed over 60 pub restaurants. Additionally, we have the chairman of a country hotel chain with huge expertise in the pubs and restaurant arena. As you'd expect, both professionals with their experience in the game have built up a multitude of contacts that we are able to utilise. They believe that the proposed changes, and given the pub's location, size and demographics of U-Hurst, it has a future as a profitable, owner-occupied or managed outlet. Parking arrangements for the houses and the redesign of the Bull's Head car park meet with Waverley and Surrey County Council highways, access and parking standards. There is no objection from the council's Arbor Cultural Officer to the loss of trees identified, and no objections on the grounds of ecology either. I have no objection to the recommended conditions and thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Please would you support this application?
Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you.
Members, Councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair. This is a very important planning application for U-Hurst and it has attracted significant public interest. Some 101 residents have registered their objections with Waverley, together with U-Hurst Parish Council. It's a very commanding site within the village. It's on the crossroads. That map that we're looking at now really doesn't give justice to exactly what's happening there. You've got the north-south, so you've got the north, which is Shear Road, the south coming into the village and the east for Oakley. What it doesn't show is the single-track lane that runs into Wickhurst Lane, and this is used as the bus stop as well. Yeah, that did help. It's gone away again, yes. So it's very much a crossroad there, but it's a crossroads of the meeting of four roads with a very unsymmetrical roundabout there, uncontrolled. Our actions this evening are, in my judgement, key to the future of the Bull's Head Inn. This application before us doesn't address the council's former concerns, the overdevelopment of the site and the harm to the conservation area, which you will notice on page 22. It is the only pub in the village. It is a listed community asset and a very much valued facility. As the local people will know, it hosts all kinds of occasions, from jumble sales to quiz nights and charity nights and goodness knows what else. Something that probably a designer pub won't be in the business for. Anyway, I digress. This is the second application we've seen for this site and I believe it throws more concerns and provides answers to. Of particular concern is the asset stripping of the Bull's Head. The loss of that green space, the garden, the function room, the Skittle Alley, and the removal of several parts of the community asset could have a devastating effect on the viability of the business. We're talking about a village pub here, a place where people like to go at the end of the day to meet with their friends and have a drink. They don't have to dress up, they can go in their work clothes. The garden provides a safe and secure place for young families. I don't believe that the newer version would. The ecology aspects, those are manifold, the various bits about stripping out of the trees, there will not be a tree left there. There will be a landscaping provision, but the trees are a habitat for local wild, not to mention the roosts. So to take that away will have a devastating effect on the ecology of that area. The function room, the Skittle Alley, these are unique assets within the community and people travel some distance to be able to use those. And they're very highly regarded further afield. The Skittle Alley, as strange and as quaint as it is, is a rather nice part of the village life. And these two parts, the function room and the garden, Skittle Alley, these are integral to the community asset and cannot and shouldn't, I don't believe, to be separated out without devastating effect. The scale of this type of harm is not expressed in the officer's report. The pub, as I mentioned, is important to the village life. It's as important as the shop, the school, the church. The community is very important to the village. It's as important as the shop, the school, the church, the community room and such like. It's a heritage piece, it really is, it's been there for a long time. And it's not just about a pub, it's about social wellbeing, it's about lifestyle and a lifestyle in tune with its environment and its community. And I believe this application will not bring any benefits to the community of Uherst. The five-year housing supply has been met by Waverley and there is no need for these homes. There will be no affordable element in there. The five terraced houses are over-development on the site. The Bull's Head is a positive contributor to the character of the conservation area and any change to the whole could significantly change the character and will be deemed harmful in the greater sense. The NPPF seeks to ensure the retention and development of community facilities and I don't believe this application facilitates that, it runs contrary to that maxim. Further, without any guarantees that the refurbishment will take place, it cannot be reasonably concluded that the proposed development's satisfactory and enhances and supports the retention of the public house. There are too many unknown factors and a lack of hard evidence to enable us to conclude that the pub's future will be secured by the planning application. I have grave concerns about that, I'll be quite interested to hear what my colleagues have to say on the matter. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, it's clear from the very good report that we have that this is a matter of balance. We're told at the bottom of page twenty-two that with regard to the changes, has the current overcome the objections of the previous refused scheme and is accepted in its own right and that's a test for members' judgement. We also have in the conclusion and during the report quite a lot of items where we have to balance the pluses with the minuses. I mean, the negatives that are made as a result of this application are clear: loss of green open space, loss of outbuildings, and of course, this outbuilding does contain the Skittles Alley. Now, you know, that may not be vitally important for a village, but bearing in mind my village has lost its Skittles Alley in Wannash, one in Fankham's gone, or goddamning, a bleak Fankham has gone. And therefore, for those organisations that occasionally want to have a tournament in Skittles, there's very few places to go to and Uherst is one of the places that one goes to. And the loss of the Skittles Alley, and I understand too that other users use these extra facilities, I would have thought would have had some impact on the viability of the pub. It says in our report that the loss of the ancillary buildings and extensions to the pub would be regrettable from a heritage perspective. And I agree, it would be regrettable. We then say that the loss of the Douglas fir and ash tree would have a negative impact on the character of the conservation area. There are a lot of elements in the report which say that things are regrettable and loss of a valuable contribution to the conservation area and the local area. And bearing in mind that this is a community asset, and in my view, and in one of the villages I represent, we have, I think we were one of the first to obtain a community asset, which was the closed pub at Black Heath. It's so important that that community asset is preserved for the benefit of the village and it's not just the garden in my view, but it is also the facilities that the pub has. I am concerned about the viability aspect. There's no report that basically says, as I understand it, and officers will correct me, that the sale of the land and the building of five houses would then make the pub viable because, as has been said by the local member and by the parish council, whether or not money is spent on the pub as a result of this development, they're not necessarily linked. But even if they were, the viability of a pub actually depends on the publican to a very large extent. And there are villages and there are places, and I'm not going to particularly comment on Uherst, where the publican has been less than good, and I don't say this happens in Uherst, and this has resulted in the pub losing trade. And just by removing some of its facilities, like the Skittles Alley, is not necessarily and rejigging it doesn't necessarily mean it'll be any more successful. What's important is that a pub has a good publican to ensure that there's a good atmosphere and the pub succeeds. And I think the pub on balance, but I'm happy to listen to what other people say, I think on balance, there'll be more damage to this pub if this should - this development should occur than if it stays as it is. So at the moment, I am not with the officers for reasons stated, but I'm very happy to listen to what other members have to say.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I must admit, I know this site very well and I'm very surprised at the pictures that were included in the presentation of the actual garden from the road because it completely and utterly understates the actual size of this site and the value of this site visually. This is in a conservation area, we're meant to be conserving this area, we're meant to be providing not only buildings but the visual amenity. This was the previously part of the village green area in Uherst. Uherst is a very pretty village, this does actually enhance that area of Uherst, providing an open area of visual amenity to everybody that is passing by there or using the pub garden. Again, the outbuilding, the picture of the outbuilding, it doesn't represent really the outbuilding that is there, the Skittle Alley that's there. I think that the visual amenity of this site is really important to the people of Uherst, it's an important contribution to the conservation area as well. I'm concerned as well about the impact on Old Forge Cottage as well and of these properties. But equally, I agree with my fellow members' concern about the pub and the viability of the pub. I would assume that the pub includes the garden as well as the buildings on the side and that they are all part of the asset of community value and therefore I think that should be taken into consideration as well. But I do not feel as if I can support at this moment the officer's recommendation because of the impact on the conservation area and the loss of the amenity value, the visual amenity value, to the people of Uherst and to the users of the pub as well, as well as the loss of biodiversity and the loss of the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and not repeat what my colleagues have said, but some clearly will be because I have quite strong views on this and especially listened to the presentation. This is countryside beyond the Green Belt and it's a conservation area. This isn't Brownfield unless except that Waverley has a Part One plan that's signed off and we have a five-year housing supply, so we shouldn't forget any of those factors. Going to the conservation area, section seventy-two of the Planning Act states, "Planning authorities must pay special attention to the desirability of preserving or enhancing the character and appearance of the area." Well, I can't see this at all. I've read it, I've looked at it, I looked at the area, I can't see any enhancement or preserving at all. Policy HA1 of Part One of the local plan, "Council ensure that significance of heritage assets are conserved or enhanced to ensure the continued protection and enjoyment of historic environment." I mean, the destruction of a bowling alley in that area does exactly the opposite of what the policy was set up for. In the report, the officers speak about the current garden makes a significant contribution to the conservation area and I think everybody here tonight has agreed with that. But they then go on to say, "The harm is through the loss of green space and outbuildings." Officers state this is less than substantial, which always worries me, and therefore paragraph one nine six states a harm should be weighed against the public benefits, including optical use. I'm not sure where the public benefits are at all on this one. There's no pots of money for infrastructure, you know, this is countryside beyond the Green Belt and conservation area, so I'm not sure it can be classed as optimum viable use. I think if it was Brownfield, I think maybe we could consider that point. Paragraph one nine seven of the NPPF states, "Significance of non-heritage assets should be taken into account." It asks for a balanced judgement regarding the scale, harm or loss and significance of the heritage asset. Well, I've considered that for my own judgement tonight. The development will remove all eighteen trees, I think there might be one single tree that's remained, and it's accepted will have a negative impact on the conservation area. Again, this will form part of my determination. My other concerns, five properties in such a small area. I mean, I think this is over-development and in my way, it's a greedy development. Five is far too much. It was mentioned about the loss of public house and how that can affect a community. Well, being the ward member for Oldfold, we did lose our - one of the public houses, the Crown, and people still talk about it and the community still have an annual reunion at the nearest pub to mourn its loss. So please don't underestimate how much of loss that can be for a community. If Chris would be kind enough just to put the photos up, I think it was the photos, the second set. Yeah, I mean, I think it's Mr Zooker mentioned about his property in the closeness. You look at that first photograph, I mean, that is a nice bit of green with trees and bushes, we are looking at destroying that. And then when you look at the block plan, Chris, if you'd be kind enough, that one there, where one to five, that's just a big blob of property. Now, that is one of the most beautiful parts of Uherst, we've all got lovely properties on the opposite side of the road, that is out of keeping with that area. You've only got to look at the properties to the north, you know, the way they're set, the size of the places, that is crammed in. Like my colleagues, I am exceptionally concerned about this application, but I will wait to see whether any of my colleagues have any different views. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. If you could keep that slide up, I'm trying to balance why we should agree to these houses. The thing to me is that there's so much harm there, there's got to be a substantial benefit for us to consider this development and I can't see it. I can't see that we're getting anything out of it to balance the loss of the amenity, the impact on the conservation area, the loss of amenity for the neighbours. And yet we've got a pub there which we talked about being viable and we've squeezed it down to, what, twenty-two car parking spaces? They've got a capacity in there for a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty-odd people. I know some of those will be local, but quite a few will be visitors. The other thing in terms of viability of the pub, often the public house, and I have some experience of this, develops a sort of war chest from the summer period which is developed through its garden. And that can allow him to substantially increase his revenue beyond his physical capacity within the public house because he's got all that additional space, all he actually needs is additional labour to service it and even that can be relatively limited. I share my colleague's enthusiasm about a Skittles Alley, but the commercial viability of a Skittle Alley is marginal, it's icing on the cake. The thing that worries me here is we're getting nothing out of this development. We're not getting the viability of that pub and to me, I think we are undermining the potential attractiveness and viability to that pub for a future purchaser and landlord. Get a good landlord in there with a garden and he'll make that place fly. That is my opinion, I'm happy to listen to others.
Thank you. Councillor Wrojewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just checking on something here. Village pubs, they do serve a vital part of community life and I take on board what councillor Dina said. And some of these pubs are lost because they're clearly not viable and they're not supported by local residents and therefore they become unsustainable and then people cash in on them. Unlike the Crown in Oldfold and one or two other pubs that have closed in and around this area, one in Ellen's Green as well, this pub is popular and it's popular for a number of reasons and whilst I don't visit there very often, I've visited a few times and recently in the Skittle Alley to a friend's funeral. So you can see the diverse range of facilities that are there that can be used for a tremendous amount of different occasions. But where I have a real problem at this is time and time again, we look at developments and I think councillor Townsend and councillor Coburn repeatedly say this and it's absolutely true, when we're looking at development, we need to look at what's around before we design the development that's appropriate for the village and this just doesn't seem to be in keeping or fitting with what is around it, it's just a square in a round hole. So I have a problem with development that is not appropriate because it is designed to fit the purpose of the pub rather than the amenity that is actually around it. So I have a problem at this because I know this pub, whilst I don't claim to know it as well as some of my colleagues do, I do know that it's doing well, I do know that it's the hub of the community, I do know that the facilities on and around are used a lot. And I look at the wording in some of the pages and I think councillor Goodridge was spot-on. The report is full of words that regret, loss, negative impact, it says it over and over again. And whilst trees were described as not a loss, the report actually said the proposed development would result in the loss of the majority of trees on site. So, and on page thirty-three, the loss of the ancillary outbuildings, trees and gardens would be regrettable. So I think here we've got a thriving pub with a development that is not in keeping with the surrounding village. It doesn't make any sense to me, I think they've come back with a scheme that is not fit for purpose and I personally can't support the officer's recommendation because this is - and I think Val Henry, the ward member, described it beautifully when she said it's unique and it absolutely is unique and we should maintain and preserve that uniqueness for the people of Uherst to enjoy for long into the future. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Stuart Stenit.
Thank you, Chairman. One point apart from agreeing with everything my colleagues have said tonight is the - I'd just like to make an example of a successful pub, which is the Grantley Arms at Wannash and it's a delightful place to go, it's a delightful place to eat, but they have made it upmarket. The biggest problem is when you go there, you can't park. And I can see the same problem with the pub at Uherst, there will not be enough parking spaces. So I think that's an important thing for a business that is flying and will be a problem for it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are you happy for us to move on to the recommendation? So the recommendation is that subject to conditions one to twenty-three and informatives one to seven, permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour, please?
That's none, Chair.
Okay, all those against?
That's unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a proposition to propose refusal of this application, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to propose that we refuse this application.
Thank you. Second please. Councillor Dinas, thank you. So, members, before we go to the vote, would you like to put forward some reasons for the refusal? I would imagine that we have a I would imagine that we have a guide from the previous application, the reasons for refusal, but I don't know if we've actually got those in the report anywhere.
Can I propose one of the reasons is the harm to the conservation area? Please.
Officers, could you assist us by giving us some reasons for refusal of the previous application, please? So, sorry, thank you, Chris, I found them on page twenty-two, so these, these, sorry? Yes, I would propose that one and two, the proposed development by virtue of its height, et cetera, et cetera, and the second, that proposed development caused less than substantial harm. That can't be right, can it?
That's what it says, it is substantial.
Yeah, I don't think that refusal can be, the proposed development caused less than substantial harm, should it read substantial? Chris, would you like to help me out here? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of points with regards to the conditions on the previous application. I mean, first of all, the point with regards to less than substantial harm, that wasn't an error in terms of how we look at it, the less than substantial harm is still considered to be harm in terms of the impact on heritage assets, and the, it's then what was required is to weigh that harm against any public benefit. So the fact that we're referring to less than substantial harm doesn't mean that it's less than substantial in terms of the weight that should be given to it. The other points, which, obviously the reasons for refusal on the previous scheme relate to the, you know, relate to the previous scheme, and the reason for refusal one does include elements such as height and mass, which may not be, may or may not be applicable to the current scheme. There would need to be some updates as well in terms of the policies, they refer to the draft local plan, and obviously they would need to refer to the, you know, the current local plan, and some of the paragraphs in the MPPF on the second reason would need to be updated.
Thank you. Members, how do we feel about the height, mass and extent of development? I think extent of development is still applicable, but are we happy with the height and, well, we've got cramped, is then already councillor Townsend, yeah?
I mean, the word I vote was bulk, but I don't know whether that's a good plan in term, but whilst I consider that, is it possible to put something about the loss of trees? When the conservation area?
Councillor Stenit, you wish to add?
That's just what I was going to say, loss of trees and loss to the conservation area. And habitat.
Are we able to say anything about the impact on the visual amenity at all?
I'm just reading through the previous reasons to see if that's covered, which isn't it? No. So thus far, we have a variation of the original reason number one, which obviously needs to be updated to accord with our new local plan, but I would suggest that bulk instead of height is used, bulk, mass and extent of development would result in a cramped form of development. Reason two, which as Chris has just explained, caused less than substantial harm, but it would fail to protect and enhance the character and appearance of the conservation area. A third reason, loss of trees, is that an acceptable reason? Yes, it is, I'm getting the nod. Trees and habitat, I think we could include those together. Are we happy with those as a theme? Sorry, councillor Townsend.
Sorry. Can visual amenity be included at all?
I'm getting the nod again, yes, visual. So if we take those first two plus an additional, sorry, councillor Goodridge.
Yeah, are we covered on reason two for refusal, on the adverse impact on the asset of the community, a community asset? Is that covered in the wording of designated or undesignated heritage asset? Or are we talking about, I just want to make it clear, I appreciate that this community asset was there six months before the last application that we refused, but it is a community asset, and I just don't know whether that is...
The wording does say the benefits of the proposal would not outweigh the harm caused to the heritage asset.
Undesignated heritage asset and a heritage asset bracket conservation area. So the heritage asset referred there is the conservation area, which is slightly different than a asset of community value, which is in the middle of page twenty-three, where the officers confirm the proposal would directly impact on an asset of community.
Mr Chairman, the planning regime is somewhat confused as to treating assets of community values material considerations in themselves, without making this unnecessarily complicated. I think you might be better to fall back on policies in the MPPF which encourage retention of recreation and cultural facilities that serve the community, and there's a specific reference to public houses.
Right, so, members, just to be clear, we have the original, a variation of the original one and two reasons, a third reason relating to trees and habitat, a fourth relating to visual amenity, and a fifth, as just suggested by Barry Devlin, referring to the MPPF preservation of cultural assets.
Rather than specifically referring to an asset of community value, Mr Chairman?
Thank you, yes.
I can confirm with planning colleagues.
And I'm sure the officers can tidy those up, but proposed by councillor Val Henry and seconded by councillor Kevin Deena's for those reasons just cited, can I have all those in favour of refusing, or the recommendation is that we refuse this application? Thank you. So that application is refused? Upper Eifold, Dunstfold, which some of us went to a site meeting on Monday morning, and I would ask Rebecca to introduce this item.
Sorry, Chairman, I'm just going to try and get this up full screen, I think that might be as best as we can get. Right, sorry, members, if I can firstly direct you, you will see that there's been an additional update sheet. This has been provided to show an amended location plan, which accurately reflects the eastern site boundary, and this is the amended location plan that you can now see on screen. Also on the additional update sheet is reference to a letter which was submitted on behalf of the applicant by a traffic, transport, sorry, consultant. This provides some additional clarification on the likely vehicular movements, officers do not have any additional comments to make on this. Turning now to the application, so the site measures approximately naught point naught eight hectares and is located to the south of an access track off Naiton's Lane in Dunstfold. The site comprises a main stable building with additional stores and attached pole barn. There's an area of paddock to the immediate east of the site, and the site sits to the south of a small cluster of residential properties, the area is rural in character. Two of the neighbouring properties are listed buildings, and one is a building of local merit, I can just point these out, so the building of local merit is this one opposite the site, and then we've got two further listed buildings to the north. The tracks surrounding the site, so to the north and the south, they are public bridleways. It's just showing you a wider aerial photograph, the site is outlined in red, and it shows the surrounding fields and then the properties to the north. To put the site into some context, the main stable building of the proposed conversion can be seen in the top left, and this also shows the detached building, the store building here, to which the proposal proposes no changes. The rear of the stable building can be seen in the bottom left, with the attached pole barn then shown in the bottom right, and the access track can be seen in the top right, but I'll show you this in more detail on the next slide. So the top left photo shows the access track with the site then on the right-hand side here. The photo below in the bottom left shows this in more closely, close detail, so you can see the adjoining paddock area. The bottom right shows the second set of access gates, and this is along the northern boundary, and then the access track runs beyond the site, and this can be seen in the top right. Turning now to the block plan, the proposal seeks permission to convert the existing stable building to a two-bed residential dwelling, there would be no change to the footprint or floor space of the existing building, and the proposal would utilise the existing site access points, and there would be space for parking within the site. The proposal would not involve any changes to the detached buildings to the south of the site. So just showing the existing elevations, so the main stable building, the front here, and turn into the side, we've got the stable building on the left-hand side with the attached pole barn. Turning now to the proposed elevations, the proposal would involve some minor changes to the external appearance of the building, there's a section of flat roof to the rear of the stable building, which is pointed out on the slide, and this would be increased in height by around twenty centimetres, there would also be a new doorway installed on this elevation. To facilitate the conversion, the roof timbers would require some upgrading, internal floors would need to be replaced, and then there would be some internal changes to repair some cracks in the walls. As shown on the floor plans, the openings to serve the habitable rooms would largely remain as existing, there would be two bedrooms provided and a bathroom to the south, and then to the north within the building, there would be living and dining space. The site is bordered by a number of mature trees, primarily oak trees, none of these are subject to a tree preservation order, and the majority of these all fall outside the application red sightline. Protective fencing, however, would be erected along the site boundary, as shown in red, and then around the tree within the site to protect the trees from the development. The matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgement are displayed now on the screen. To take you through these, officers are of the opinion that whilst the site would be isolated in terms of access and distance to public services and a defined settled area, the building is not in active use, and its reuse could fall under one of the special circumstances set out in paragraph seventy-nine of the MPPF. The council does not have a policy which requires the applicant to demonstrate that there is no longer a use for the, sorry, no longer a need for the existing stabling, therefore no material objection is raised with regard to the loss of use. Whilst there would be some external changes, these would be minor in nature, the footprint and floor space would not be altered, and the area of residential curtilage, future enlargement of building and outbuildings could all be controlled by means of planning conditions on any grant of permission. Taking this into account, along with the distant neighbouring dwellings, officers consider that there would be no material harm to the surrounding countryside, visual amenity and neighbouring residential amenity. As I previously mentioned, there are two listed buildings in the locality and one building of local merit. The council's heritage officer has had full regard to the submitted third-party heritage impact report, and has visited the sites, and is of the opinion that there would be no resultant adverse harm to the designated heritage assets. The site accesses would be utilised, and there would be sufficient space for parking within the site. Just to mention, the access road to the site is not an adopted road, and it is acknowledged that it is a bridleway, however, officers are satisfied that the proposal would not result in a need to divert or alter any of the public rights of way, and that no concern is raised with regards to the traffic. Subject to the imposition of recommended tree and ecology conditions, no objection is raised on these grounds, and just to confirm, the converted dwelling would comply with the technical space standards. There is another original update sheet, which members will have had sight of, just to clarify, this provides some additional information on the submitted heritage impact assessment report, which was submitted by a third party, and the views of the council's heritage officer are also set out on the update sheet. We've received some comments from Thames Water, and two additional informatives have been recommended as a result of this. We've responded to an additional letter of representation, and the agent has submitted some comments in direct response to the third-party objections. The officer recommendation is for approval, and this can be seen set out on the additional, which is the second update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. As with the last one, this has public speaking, and I would invite Mr Sean DeVoto on behalf of the objectors to address the committee.
Good evening. My name is Sean DeVoto. I live in Upper Eifold. I'm a retired Royal Naval Engineer, not a planning expert. I'm one of twenty-one objectors to this development scheme. Despite holidays, there are seventeen of us here this evening, plus the parish council. The local opposition to this scheme is overwhelming, only twenty-five adults live in Upper Eifold. No one supports it except for the applicants advised by D and M. They live overseas and plan to convert the stables into a holiday home. Situated outside the village settlement, this is not a windfall, it's a rotten apple. We, the objectors, feel the planning officer's report has misinterpreted key planning principles and disregarded key evidence. We spend a lot of time and effort grasping how the planning system protects our countryside. Our objections were planning-led, advised by Victoria Hutton, a leading planning barrister. Both the national framework and the local plan limit development in remote rural areas. These stables are isolated, as agreed in the officer's report. Two miles from the nearest settlement and local services, down a single farm track, which is in constant use for moving livestock, machinery and feed, and cut off by floods in winter. The officer's report claims that special circumstance C to Para seventy-nine of MPPF applies because the stables are redundant or disused, and there is an enhancement to the immediate setting. We totally disagree. Firstly, this five-acre equestrian facility, paddock, stable, shelter, barn and office, is not redundant or disused, the facility is used for grazing, and the stables are being used for storage. The applicants have moved their horses elsewhere, but demand for stabling is high in this popular riding area. The facility adjoins two public bridleways. The applicants have refused offers to rent, and they've rejected genuine offers to buy for current use. If a remote building is deliberately underused for a short while, does that really mean it's redundant or disused? If Waverley adopts this extreme... If Waverley adopts this extreme interpretation of the guidance, goodbye our beautiful countryside. Secondly, this proposal does not enhance the immediate setting, one which Surrey has asked Natural England to upgrade to AONB status. The scheme is highly likely to remove mature oak trees that form a beautiful vista as you approach Upper Eifold. Domestic and garden paraphernalia will block the landscape still further. Our heritage expert identified harm to this historic setting. By case law, such harm is owed considerable importance and weight in your decision. Furthermore, the retained local policy RD seven stipulates no substantial reconstruction. This scheme will require substantial reconstruction. Only the stable front and flimsy side walls will remain intact. Foundations, steel frames, roof, sewage and drainage, all new. The tree officer's report highlights the risk to the mature tree roots. I pity building control. Can it be right to remove the core of a prized equestrian amenity to make one isolated dingy bungalow which harms its rural and historic surroundings? The scheme contravenes four national and twelve local development plan policies. Please reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVoto. Now I'd invite Stephen Haynes from the parish council to speak. Good evening, Mr. Haynes.
My name is Stephen Haynes. I am chairman of Dunstfold Parish Council. I am also chairman of the Dunstfold Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group. I speak on behalf of the whole village of Dunstfold, not just Upper Eifold and not just those who have objected to this application. Dunstfold has forty-seven listed buildings and many buildings of merit. We are very fortunate in having areas of unspoilt countryside that we want to preserve, such as in and around the hamlet of Upper Eifold, which has been recommended by Surrey County Council for inclusion in the AONB. Dunstfold has a high level of equestrian use and stabling facilities are in great demand in the parish. We have a large number of bridleways and country lanes enjoyed by horse riders, cyclists and walkers. The parish council objected to this application and you have our objections before you that I will not repeat here. The design and access statement that forms part of this application states that the proposal gives due regard to the emerging Dunstfold Neighbourhood Plan. As chairman of the steering group, I can say that this is not the case. There was no application under the call for sites and if there was one, I'm sure it would have been rejected. Policy RD seven of the local plan states that the reuse and adaption of buildings in rural areas will, will be permitted where the building is capable of retention, reuse without substantial reconstruction and the use does not detract from the character or appearance of the area. I am a chartered building surveyor and I will suggest that by the time the existing concrete floor slab has been replaced and had insulation added, the roof strengthened and the single skinned cracked walls, if they are still standing, which I doubt, have been strengthened to take the new roof and insulated, the building will have effectively been demolished and rebuilt. This application cannot fall under RD seven. On the matter of detracting from the area, I have found an interesting appeal decision relating to a similar proposal in Hurstmansoe, East Sussex, dated April two thousand and fifteen. The inspector held that the domestication of the site by virtue of the creation of a garden and the like would be detrimental to the existing rural setting and found that the proposed development would harm the character and appearance of the area. Exactly the same could be said for this application, which is very much visible when approaching Upper Eifold. The appeal was dismissed. The officer's report accompanying this application states that the officers believe that the special circumstance in paragraph seventy-nine of the MPPF applies, that is where the development would reuse redundant or disused buildings and enhance its immediate setting. However, later in the report, the officers give their view that the proposed dwelling would not materially adversely harm the character of the, of the area. They therefore accept there would be some harm but it would not be material. This falls far short of the requirement that there should be enhancement. Finally and importantly, we have a number of mature and ancient oak trees in our parish and the parish council is concerned that this development would put a number of oaks at risk. Councilors, please help Dunstfold retain its special rural character and refuse this application. Thank you.
And finally, I'd invite Jesse Chapman, the agent, to speak in support of the application. Good evening, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, members of the committee for allowing me to speak in favour of the proposal this evening and I am pleased that your officers have recommended the application for approval. In making the recommendation, officers identified that the proposal is acceptable and fully compliant with the requirements of this, with the requirements of this council's and government's planning policies. However, third-party comments have been noted, which I would like to address. Firstly, the applicants have a legal right to use the access road and Surrey County Council has found no reason to withhold planning permission on any highway grounds. This council's own heritage officers have confirmed that proposal would not have an adverse impact upon the listed properties in the vicinity and given the scale and nature of the development, the proposal would not have any undue impact upon this area of great landscape value. The applicants did not seek to erect a close-boarded fence and officers have suggested the imposition of condition relating to the suitable boundary treatment and landscaping. It is noted that officers intend to remove the new dwelling's permitted development rights. Accordingly, any subsequent extension or other development would be subject to complying with the council and central government's relevant planning policies. The application is accompanied by an agricultural report and the council's agricultural officer has set out conditions to ensure the protection of the trees. It has been confirmed that proposal would not result in any harm to any protected species. As way of a condition, the applicants will have to provide details of any services provided to require and including repairs to drains and soakaways. There will be no undue impact upon the level of amenity currently enjoyed by neighbouring properties. The building is structurally sound and capable of conversion. It can meet the technical standards in terms of living space through very small and very few alterations to the building's exterior envelope. The building's character and appearance have not been materially altered. Indeed, it is submitted that proposal will enhance the site and the surrounding areas. The MPPF and recent judgements have made clear that such types of development, the conversion of rural buildings to residential development, is sustainable development. Reference to the neighbours seeking to purchase stables or lack of existing residents with their own equestrian facilities or lack of equestrian facilities within the, within the borough, uh, are, are not, um, not relevant to this application. Um, the, the, the gentleman speaking before me cited, um, uh, an appeal case in East Sussex, I think he said, um, which clearly is outside of the borough and we do not have any details of what that application appeal, um, looked like. So I do not think it's, it's relevant to the determination of this application. Um, I do understand that, 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 that change, um, can be, um, an emotive, um, matter but the development is acceptable in planning terms. It's supported by this council's own policies and by central government policy guidance. Um, finally, I would just like to say that the applicants, um, lived in this locality for over forty years and would dearly love to move back and they would be moving back as a home, not as a holiday home. Um, thank you again for allowing me to speak, uh, in favour of the proposal and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Members. councillor Gray.
Thank you for letting me come first, Mr. Chairman. And can I first of all just, um, say that I am a member of the Dunstfold Parish Council but that I did not partake in their decision to object to this proposal. Um, I'd like to thank officers for their report and councillors for agreeing a site visit on Monday which I, I trust was useful to them. Upper Eifold is a small hamlet within Dunstfold Parish. It's accessed, I think you've heard, along a mile-long lane through a farmyard. It's used by the farm, it's used by the few residents there, it's used extensively by horse riders, many walkers and cyclists and as I think was seen on the site visit, farming is very much in evidence. There's been no new development in this area for many, many years and no need has been identified in the neighbourhood plan. Dunstfold has a, a number of buildings, listed buildings, as the chairman has said. Um, this area has a particularly, um, interesting set, a sixteenth-century grade-two listed building and two adjacent buildings that actually formed a part of that which are now separate units. And although the heritage officer is making a comment that it's not, it, it's not close enough to the main house, I think the setting that we should be looking at is not only the main houses but the ones adjacent to, to, to that house. So it's really taking it to ever as, as a group and in my view, there will be effect from the domestication of the stables. The stables are clearly visible and we've seen it on, on the pictures there but they appear well-maintained, they're well-shaded, they don't look in any way derelict or out of keeping with the surroundings. Uh, councillors didn't go inside of the building so we can't say whether they were filled up with, with things or, or whatever but the buildings themselves were, were extremely well, uh, well-presented for stables. And this site was actually acquired, um, by the applicants, uh, it, when they had barn house in seventy-eight. It was then sold in September sixteen, not long ago, um, but the stables, outbuildings and land, um, were retained when the applicants moved to Spain. The applicant seeks to convert these stables into a tiny two-bedroomed home and as it's claimed, these stables are no longer needed. I would challenge the planning consultant and to some extent our own officers, which makes a point on page fifty-four, uh, that the barn on the site is capable of being moved or used for equestrian purposes. Well, if we're considering using one of the barns for equestrian purposes, why are we saying that these stables are not needed? Um, there's a little bit of an ambiguity there for, for me. NPPF, paragraph seventy-seven says that decisions should be responsive to local circumstances and that reflect local need. Para seventy-eight goes on to say, to support sustainable development in rural areas, housing should be located where it will enhance and maintain the vitality of the rural community. And I put those forward for the, the real, the response. There is no local need by identified, uh, in this area for housing. The parish council chairman basically identified that, nothing has come forward and nor is it needed for the vitality of this rural area. And there is no requirement being identified for local equestrian or agricultural workers. It is an isolated, um, and the conversion, I think, as, as said, been purported for a holiday home, although the age, the consultant acting for the applicant said it's going to be a permanent, uh, a permanent home. Either way, um, it's, it's a home here of a conversion of the, the stabling. NPPF, paragraph seventeen, the seventy-nine decision, um, it's a decision should, should avoid development of isolated homes in the countryside. I think everyone's agreed it's, it's isolated and there are exceptions and the exceptions that's been put forward here is it won't result in any, um, it's, sorry, it will be used for redundant or disused buildings and that it should enhance its immediate settings. And I think the enhance, the immediate setting is the important, uh, thing. Officers accept on the application on page fifty-six and sixty-two, and I quote their words, "it will not result in material detrimental visual harm." And I had to rehearse that to get that right. This is somewhat short of the expectation of NPPF ninety-seven C requiring it to enhance its immediate setting. It actually will cause harm. It's in the officer's report. I go back, I mean, we, we had the comment there about, um, the Hurstmansoe case in East Sussex and I know it's in a different reason, it's interesting insofar as the one aspect of it was, was the, the domestication and the garden paraphernalia is the area that they thought would cause rural setting. Let's say that it's outside of the, of, of our borough but let's just say that as you look at the plan, if we can have a look at the plan, we're told that the garden area is in the front, that's the bit that comes and faces out there and that garden area is the one that will have some form of decking, is some, well, possibly the odd deck chair, things like that. It's certainly going to domestisise, it's not actually going to have a horse being led back and forwards and put into the stable, it's going to be different, it's going to be alien to that particular outlet. This is what the neighbours feel. This is what the parish council feels. The trees on the site, if we could just put that tree map up and thank you for including that, it doesn't do it justice but can we just flip to the one, the aerial photograph which shows the tree covered? That's, that's the one there. If you look down there, you can hardly see that site with the red line. Actually, the trees are, are, are much more overlooking that site. The site is extremely shaded and great for horses, it helps them, the shade, not very good if you're living there. And the tree officer's have made the point, he says it's clearly that the borging trees, which are many oaks, Dunstfold is well-known for its oak trees, significantly shades the site and raises concerns about the removal of these to satisfy the needs of the changed use. That's a significant risk in our view. And that the building will not, I think also, I would raise the, the question of RD seven and I don't think it's a massive point but I can't see this building being redeveloped without some major, major surgery but, um, it could be developed, it could be, it could be developed but it's still going to end up as a domesticated, um, stable block in an AGLV area and actually significantly change the outlook that we see across those fields. Um, I was somewhat-
councillor Gray, could, could you sum up, do you think, please, because there are others that, that wish to speak and you have had rather a long time now, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I've slowed down because I didn't see the clock moving, I'm sorry. Um, I'm somewhat concerned that the red line that was originally put in actually encroached on the, on the meadows. We've, I queried that with the officer and effectively we've been told tonight that that red line has been redrawn. I'm not going to make any more points but I'm really concerned that a red line can be moved back and forwards almost at, at, at a whim there and that is, the whole site is then the ownership and I think the, the other thing that's worth noting is so is the, the, the area behind that red line is also. So summing up finally, or not even summing up, unless I hear something very much to the, that's going to change my mind, I'm afraid I'm, this instance, I'm going to disagree with the officer's recommendation and I would be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gray. councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I found the site visit very helpful, not only to see the stables in the setting where they are, having eventually found Upper Eifold, thanks to the local member rescuing me when I was facing the wrong direction, but one of the big advantages of the site visit was to see the state of the stables. I'm not a surveyor, as distinct from the chairman of the parish council, but even I could notice that firstly, the overhang in front of the stables was propped up in one place, clearly, um, it was- one place, clearly it would fall down if the props are taken away. Secondly, I noticed on the first stable door, clearly the front wall had slipped because there was about an inch and a half gap from the square gate that was there, so there clearly had been a lot of subsidence already. The roof was in an appalling state with felt tiles, and if you put anything heavier than felt on there, you're going to have a problem, and they are saying that they're going to have to redo the foundations as well as the roof timbers. And then you look and see the layout of this place, and I certainly wouldn't like to live in a house where I have a stable door in my bedroom, which is shown to be an opening door, in both bedrooms have got opening stable doors, and I'm getting the impression that we are being asked to approve this by the applicants on the basis that there'll be absolutely no change to this building, it'll look exactly as it is now, when in reality, what's going to happen is building control will look at it and say, you know, you're going to have to rebuild that, rebuild the other, and then we'll get an application in for an altered building, having agreed the principle of residential property going on this site. And that worries me, that this is step one of getting our approval by showing the plans looking identical from the outside on the front, and then find that the practicalities of life are such that you've got to demolish it and rebuild, and it won't look the same the second time round. What also worries me is the suggestion by officers that this is a redundant stables. Well, anybody who owns stables, and I do, can easily leave them empty and then say, you know, "It's empty and I can't use them, and therefore I want to put people rather than horses in it." And I don't think that the changes are going to enhance the immediate settings in the area. As councillor Gray has made clear, the front of the house will be the garden, so when you come into the, approach the property from the road, what you're going to see is the field, and then you're going to see the umbrellas and the chairs and the washing line and everything else that you'll see as you come in, which I don't think is going to enhance the immediate setting of the building. And I am therefore worried about this, and therefore, subject to what I hear from others, I'm not minded at the moment to go with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Voroszewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd supported the visit, but unfortunately I wasn't able to go. I, with respect to a number of the objectors, a lot of what was said I don't actually agree with, whilst I do have a tremendous amount of empathy, but I find this staggeringly weird, I find it odd. There's no commercial relationship in this site here, they're not committed to, because if they're not committed to, they could apply for a change of use if it was commercial. But at the same time, the applicant doesn't have a responsibility to provide equestrian use for the demands of anybody else. Where I have a problem is how odd this application is in terms of not being in keeping with what is possibly what is wanted. And I find myself agreeing 100% again with councillor Goodridge this evening, is that by looking at this building and getting the change and getting permission now, will we establish the principle of development and will we find that in the months or years to come that this is a little gold mine and eventually in keeping with what you'd expect on a four-, five-acre site, a four-, five-bedrooms, 6,000-square-feet house, is that where we're heading? But is this the starting point? So unfortunately, as I say, there's a couple of the reasons I don't agree with, because I think a landowner has the right to do appropriately what they should in keeping with their property, and there is no commercial aspect to this. But however, I do feel that this could be the starting point for something in the future that would set the precedence if we agree here this evening. So unfortunately, I can't support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. I think I would say from a planning point of view that we have to judge what we're presented with tonight, not what we think might happen in the future. So we have an application here for the conversion of this existing building, so that's what we need to consider tonight.
Chairman, if I may come back on that, I wholeheartedly agree, but I think we need to be mindful of the actions we take this evening could create that precedence. So I think it's, we could be responsible for what happens in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Stuart Stenit.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't keep you too long because I don't want to get told off. Of many years of carrying out excavation work in the area, and to say that the roof can be supported without going to existing trench work, and the guidance on that is that any roots, you have to go a metre below those roots to get past of building control. And looking at the picture, if we can go back to the picture which shows the trees, I fail to see where, no, can we go to the aerial photograph, please? That's it. I fail to see how you could get the support for the roof, and as my colleague has already said, the building is falling down, without doing new trenches, you're talking drains, et cetera, et cetera, you are going to damage those trees because you are under the canopy of them. And there's just no way, even if you piled it, you couldn't do it. So I'm afraid I don't agree with the officers either, and I don't agree that it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are we happy to move on to the recommendation? Oh, councillor Deane.
I promise I'll be a quarter of the time that councillor Gray was, so that gives me about 15 minutes then. This is countryside beyond the Greenbelt, AGLV, you know, we've mentioned it once or twice, but that's a really important thing. It's outside the settlement area. I think it's really interesting to read the comments on page 49 from Dunsfold Parish Council. I think, I won't go through them, I think they're there for colleagues to read, but I think it paints a really good picture. It doesn't comply with the design principles of the Dunsfold Village Design Statement. I won't ask councillor Gray to read through the document, I know he has a copy tonight with him. I could say there's no mention of a charging point, but I'll move on from that. I was really interested about the page 51, when it talks about the heritage impact assessment, which at the time, we didn't know what it was going to say, and I think it was either the additional or, the original additional or the additional additional, I think it's the update sheet, page four, where it lists five conclusions from that. And when I read those, you know, they sounded quite an important factor to consider. Appreciate the paragraph afterwards, it sort of says, the heritage officer basically doesn't, dismisses them, I don't know if that's the right word, or takes them into consideration but doesn't feel they're important enough to affect the application. But those five points, to me, in my judgment, I thought were quite important. So again, I'll leave it at that point and that point only. Absolutely agrees, isolated development. I am concerned about the mature oak trees. Councillor Stenit's right, I think that's a real concern for the future, and should permission be granted tonight, I think we should be looking at conditions and possibly councillor Gray looking at TPOs, you know, I think that would be a suggestion. One other point, page 62, it states a removal of permitted rights. I wasn't sure which condition number that was, I wasn't sure whether that was condition number 11, or whether that was just the wordy condition or something else. But I couldn't actually see, having mentioned on page 62, that it was suggested that we could remove permitted rights, I actually couldn't see it as a condition. If I've missed it, it's probably because with four applications, it's very easy to get one confused with the other on conditions. So again, if colleagues are minded to approve.
It's condition 11.
I thought it was that, but it's, when you read it, it's a bit nebulous, you know.
That's the standard condition that we all use on development.
Okay, Chairman, I'll leave it as that, kept to my promise.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman, I promised you very quick. I just would like to draw members' attention to paragraph 79 of the NPPF, which says that "Planning policies and decisions should avoid the development of isolated homes", which this is definitely an isolated home unless one or more of the following circumstances apply, and "we're using the development of the reuse, the redundant or disused buildings", that's the point we're saying, "and enhance its immediate setting." Now, from the plans that we've been given, from the look of it, of the development, I cannot see, and I fail to see, how any enhancement is being made on this site at all, and therefore it will contradict paragraph 79 because there is no enhancement to the immediate setting from this development, and therefore, all it is, is an isolated development in the countryside. So again, I have to support what my fellow members have said, and I don't think I can support the officers on this one this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we happy to move to the recommendation?
I'm sorry to pipe up at this point. I have a question. I'm still unclear from the update sheet whether there is main drainage at this site or available to this site in this area, or whether they will be reliant upon a septic tank and all the other things that go with that. Can anybody answer that question for me, please? Yes, exactly.
Sorry, if I can just mention, Chairman, we've got a recommended condition to get details of, I believe, the foul sewage disposal, and then on the basis of the comments received from Thames Water, we've recommended informatives as they've asked. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roarke. Notwithstanding that, I don't, I mean, the size of the site, the state of the building, the view of the building, the state of the building at the rear end, the main building with a, the main part of the building with a pitched roof, it doesn't look too bad, but needs lots and lots of work doing to it. The back's got to be raised, it's got to be changed, I could see the pole barn being incorporated into the whole thing. I don't believe, I'm afraid I have great difficulty in understanding how anybody would want to, unless they're absolutely desperate to live in a condition like this. And how they would fit in, all of the septic tank drainage, et cetera, and soakaways, they'll have to go with all those facilities, within that small area, if they're not going to connect to main drain, means that it's a non-runner, unless they then encroach onto the paddock which is not part of this application. So I can't support this application.
Okay, members, any last thoughts before we move to the recommendation? Right, so the recommendation is that subjects to conditions 1 to 17 as set out on pages 62 to 68 of the Agenda Report, informatives 1 to 5 as set out on page 68 of the Agenda Report, and additional informative 6 and 7 as set out on the update sheet. Permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour, please?
That's none.
And those against?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
So could I please have a recommendation to refuse? Councillor Stenit has proposed it, councillor Deane has seconded it. Could I have some reasons for the refusal, please?
I think, sorry.
I hadn't pressed my button earlier and you didn't hear me. I can just say that the proposal is unconvincing as a well-designed, sustainable dwelling.
Thank you. Any other, certain, councillor Gray?
I think the most important point there is actually NPPF 79, and the fact that we, I think, generally unanimously agreed that this does not enhance, it's arguable whether it's disused, I think that's an area I wouldn't want to go, but certainly it doesn't enhance.
Any others? Officers, any comments?
Could I just add the trees and the risks of trees, and the, well, it's not, the overshadowing and the shadow and the tree things, they are not really suitable for domestic, domestic living, and therefore, the risk to the trees is very high. I don't know whether the officers could help me put that into some form of shape.
Officers, any comments, please?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just firstly come back on the trees. My officer opinion is that because they're not subject to a tree preservation order, we're not in a conservation area, the majority are outside the red application sightline, I think in all honesty, we'd struggle to get a justified reason for refusal on that ground. I had regard to your comments, and I'm going to suggest some reasons for refusal based on those comments that I think potentially, you know, we would have a policy reason for refusing them. Obviously, the exact wording will need to be decided, but first of all, something along the lines of, the site is in an isolated location, the proposed conversion would not fall under any exceptions of paragraph 79 of the NPPF, and the proposal would therefore result in an isolated dwelling in the countryside in conflict with paragraph 79. Secondly, taken on board your comments about the heritage assets, maybe members, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe there'd be a reason for refusal there that you'd like to pursue, something along the line of, the proposal would result in less than substantial harm to designated and non-designated heritage assets, the less than substantial harm would outweigh the public benefits of the proposal. And then I think sort of maybe a more justified reason for refusal, taken into account of the visual amenities and the character of the area, would be that the introduction of a residential use and its associated residential paraphernalia would give rise to adverse impacts on the character and visual amenities of the area in conflict with set policies as well as the Dunsfold Village Design Statement. Thank you, Chairman.
Members, are you happy with those reasons? So proposed by councillor Jeanette Stewart and seconded by councillor Deane, that the recommendation is that this application be refused, and the reasons in outline are, one, the isolated location conflicting with NPPF paragraph 79, the heritage assets, and the, thirdly, the visual amenity and the introduction of residential use not being appropriate. So with those conditions to be filled out properly by the officers in due course, can I have all those in favour of refusing this application, please?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you, members. If any members of the public gallery wish to leave at this time, feel free, thank you. Okay, members, if we move on to item A3, which is application reference WA oblique 2018 oblique 0972, Chusley Farm, Chusley Lane, Godleming, and once again I'd invite Rebecca to introduce the application.
Thank you, Chairman. The application site measures 0.5 hectares and is located on the eastern side of Chusley Lane. The site forms part of Chusley Farm, the land of which is used for the growing of soft fruit. The aerial photo shows part of the wider farm site, there are existing buildings to the north of the site, along with some residential dwellings, so we've got the existing farm buildings here, we've got some residential dwellings to the immediate west and north, and then to the west, sorry, of Chusley Lane is the Milford Hospital Residential Development Site. So the access of Chusley Lane is shown in the top-left photo, this leads to the existing storage buildings, which are shown in the top-right. There's an existing gravelled area lying to the south of these existing buildings, and this then leads on to a parking area to the far east here. Permission is sought for the erection of a
Permission is sought for the erection of an extension to the existing storage buildings to specifically provide for a cold storage area. This would support the farm and the growing of raspberry canes, as the proposed cold storage would be used to chill the canes and prompt flowering and fruit production. The canes, after being chilled and stored, would then be planted in the farm's fields. The applicant has confirmed that no fruit from other farms would be transported to the farm to be stored in the proposed extended area, and the development would serve the fruit grown on Tewesley Farm itself. The extension would measure approximately forty-nine and a half metres by nineteen metres, and would have an external footprint of around nine hundred and forty square metres. To put this into context, the existing storage buildings have an external footprint of around one thousand two hundred square metres. There would be no alteration to the site access, and a track would be provided off the entrance road to lead to the parking area, and this would run to the south of the proposed extension. Planting would take place to the east of the site entrance and to the south of the proposed development. The proposed extension would feature a pitched roof and materials which would match the existing buildings, as shown on the proposed elevations. The dotted lines on the bottom two elevations, I've just popped those on to show where the separation would be between the existing built form and the proposed built form. And as members will see, the design and style of the building would be a continuation from the existing. So the slide shows the floor plans and how the different storage areas would be linked. There would be an internal link with the proposed and one of the existing storage The matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment are on the slide. Officers are satisfied that the proposal would be reasonably required for agricultural purposes and would therefore be acceptable within the Greenbelt area. Whilst acknowledging that the proposed extension would be of a large size and scale, officers nevertheless consider that the extension would be seen in the context of existing farm buildings and would be of an acceptable appearance to match the existing built form. Any public views afforded of the development would, in officers' view, not be materially harmful, and the development would be sufficient distance away from any neighbouring properties, including the listed buildings, so as to not result in any adverse harm. It is noted that the main area of concern raised by Buzzbridge Parish Council and the third parties appears to officers to be that of traffic movements, and HGVs in particular. No objection has been raised by the County Highway Authority with regard to the proposal subject to recommended conditions. The applicant has confirmed that the storage building would actually reduce the number of HGV movements that are currently taking place to transport the raspberry canes off-site currently to Kent, as the provision of the onsite storage would essentially remove this requirement. There has been an update sheet, which if I could draw members' attention to. There's been an additional letter received from Buzzbridge Parish Council. This sets out the traffic-related concern. The parish council have commented that there is an opportunity to impose a condition, should permission be granted, to regulate the timing and number of HG movements to and from the farm. Officers acknowledge the concern over the existing traffic levels. Just to note, there are no planning conditions currently in place attached to any of the historic permissions on Tewesley Farm to enforce the traffic levels. I would advise members that the imposition of conditions is required to meet five tests set out in the MPPF, and in officers' opinion, it wouldn't be reasonable to impose a condition to restrict HGV movements to and from the farm to rectify an existing situation. Officers consider that this would go beyond the scope of the current application before members this evening. Having regard to all the planning considerations, officers are of the opinion that, subject to the imposition of conditions and informatives, the proposal would be acceptable and permission should be granted. The recommendation is therefore as set out in the Agenda Report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now, again, public speaking, and I would invite the representative of Buzzbridge Parish Council... I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Alison Martin. I'm obviously not John Ray.
No, I had got that far. Alison Martin.
I'm the chairman of Buzzbridge.
Alison Martin, Chairman.
Was the gentleman at the back, on the back row expecting to speak?
No, I think he's here in support.
Oh, okay, right, all right, thank you.
Are we okay then?
Please, yes.
Thank you. Well, good evening. My name's Alison Martin, I'm chairman of Buzzbridge Parish Council. Today, Tewesley Farm buildings are surrounded by a sea of white polythene. Most of those fields that are not polytunnelled are now covered in white insect netting. We therefore consider that this second cold store will have little additional impact on the landscape. However, like the residents of Station Lane, we are extremely concerned for its possible HGV traffic implications. Mr David Kay of Hall Hunter informed Whitely Parish Council in July that he hoped the proposed vernalisation processes would reduce the eight HGV movements a day, delivering produce to six. But he failed to define the numbers of inbound and returning HGVs bringing in supplies. I followed a very large articulated lorry from Turner's Supply Chain Solutions into the site this afternoon. How many of these or equivalent are there every day? If only Hall Hunter had been frank and transparent in the past in their dealings with the council, there would be more trust from us and local residents now. As a council, we support exciting developments in local industry, but these should not be at the expense of quality of life for neighbours and destruction of local roads. It is not just the nuisance to residents and the damage to the road that concerns us. Station Lane is not wide enough for one of the farm's articulated lorries to pass its own coach without mounting the pavement between the station and Milford, and the pavement here is so narrow that two pedestrians cannot pass each other without stepping into the road. The pavement is already in fairly constant use by people walking to and from the railway station, and will become even busier as Waverley encourages commuters living in the new golf course development to walk to the station. We must assume that Mr Kay meant what he said when he foresaw a twenty-five per cent reduction in HGV traffic. This provides us with the solution that will satisfy everyone. If you are minded to allow this application, it must include conditions to regulate the number of all HGV and coach movements to and from the farm. These should be limited to less than eight per day, and the conditions should be future-proof, easy to monitor, and realistic to enforce. With this new cold store, the farm will have over five thousand square metres of storage, and, given that the road access is so poor, it beggars belief that its HGV traffic would be completely unregulated. You must remember that vernalisation is just the current project. Hall Hunter likes to move with the times, and it is quite possible that in a few years' time, it will be something else, and this might generate even more HGV traffic. Waverley must put a stop to this free-for-all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, invite David Kay, the supporter from Tewesley Farm, to speak. Good evening, Mr Kay.
My name's David Kay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening. Tewesley Farm's been growing crops and livestock for hundreds of years. Over the last thirteen years, it's developed into one of the best fruit farms in Europe, and has often been used as a benchmark for the industry. The activities of the farm relating to biodiversity and pollinators were recognised by Waitrose in twenty fourteen, when it was awarded Waitrose Demonstration Farm status. It is also a community asset, with over two thousand people recently visiting us for the day on Open Farm Sunday. At Tewesley, we grow strawberries, raspberries, blueberries for the top-end supermarkets that demand the best available produce for their customers. We also grow our own raspberry plants in order to produce fruit in the following years. Soft fruit production is different from other crop production in that we cannot use seeds. For us, every seed within each berry is effectively a different variety, and because of this, we need to grow millions of small raspberry plants from mother plants each year. These grow in open fields supported by wires in preparation for them to produce berries the year after. At Tewesley, we grow nearly one million raspberry plants on the outer fields that we cannot put polytunnels on. Once they've grown to one and a half metres tall, these canes need to be chilled or vernalised for a number of months to convince them that it has been winter, and then when we take them out of the fridges, they provide us with fruit ninety days later. Currently, most of these canes are transported to Kent to be chilled and then transported back if they're to be grown at Tewesley. As well as this producing additional lorry movements around the farm, the cane often get damaged in transport, which results in economic loss. The fridges that we use in Kent are very old apple storage fridges, because they're the only ones available. They don't work stunningly well, and sometimes the canes get overchilled or underchilled, and that results in further loss. We always try and be at the forefront of British horticulture, and have invested in the breeding of new raspberry varieties that are now regarded as the best available in the world. Because they are aimed at the top end of the market, they have to be grown and prepared extremely precisely to meet the standards required. It is these market-changing varieties that you can see growing in the fields at Tewesley. The application in front of you is critical in order to increase the efficiency of the operation of the farm. It will ensure that we are able to continue to deliver the best raspberry varieties available to the UK consumer. The proposed barn will utilise quiet, highly effective chillers, which will impart run off the electricity produced by solar panels on adjacent roofs. The proposed chilled storage will enable canes already grown on the farm to be vernalised on-site to meet current and future production requirements. The co-location of the different parts of the raspberry production cycle on the farm has a potential to significantly reduce the transport impacts of this part of the business. If you grant us permission tonight, this is likely to remove between fifty and a hundred unnecessary lorry movements per year from roads around the farm and in future years. Much has been said recently about the need to reduce traffic linked to the farm. I can confirm that granting this permission will do that. It has been alleged by some that more barns means more traffic. In this case, the reverse is true. I am aware from some of the conjecture in local social media and other media recently that there is a concern that we are creating an international headquarters at the farm. I can assure all of you that this is not the case. Tewesley is a fruit farm that grows and packs its own fruit, and has never packed any fruit from Portugal. It is not the headquarters of Hall Hunter or a dormitory for workers who work on other farms each day. I can give you my word that these assertions are foundless. Whilst fruit lorries do number between six and ten in the peak of the season, there are many ancillary deliveries to the farm linked to our operation, and we are concerned about those as the local community. We're currently working with local community groups to see how we can make that better. So in summary, Tewesley Farm is a benchmark for high-quality production. We have an excellent record of delivering what we promised to you in the past. The proposed development is very expensive, and as such, we would only go for it if it was really required. I sincerely ask you to continue to support us as an important farming business in Waverley, and grant us planning permission for this critical facility on our farm.
Thank you, Mr Kay. Members, councillor Goodrich.
I don't know whether the local member wants to speak first. I'm happy to defer to him, but otherwise, I will speak. I mean, this business we should be very proud of in Waverley, as it does a lot, apart from being one of the leading growers, as we've heard, it also has a very large community impact, and it's very community-minded. I was interested to hear from the Buzzbridge Parish Council that they're not objecting to this on the basis of the visual impact, but purely highways. And when we have the Highway Authority saying that they have no objections, it does put us in a position where a highway objection could not, in my book, happen. That then leaves one other matter, and that is whether or not we should be imposing conditions about putting in maximum number of traffic movements for HGVs. It would be somewhat daft, in my view, to start putting those on when this application may well reduce the highway movements. We are assured that this is... will happen, and I have no reason to disbelieve it. And I can see the logic of not having to send the raspberry canes somewhere else to be told it's winter, and then bring them back and say it's now spring again, when it can be done on-site, and thereby reducing the canes going off-site and then coming back. I accept the officer's advice that this application would not... it would not be right to impose highways' condition of movements on an application that is actually designed to reduce the traffic movement. So I am fully in favour of the officer's recommendation, and would not be happy to add on any conditions that are not there already. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Bayon.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first of all, Richard Seaborn, my fellow councillor, called this item in. I'm not that disagreed with the call-in. The reason for agreeing for the call-in for this, because otherwise it would have been dealt with under delegated powers, is the angst and anxiety between the population, the parish council, and the farm. I've dealt with, in a limited way, with Tewesley Farm, and on a number of occasions, talked to them, et cetera, and I've always found them to be straightforward and honest in their approach. But I have difficulty in coming to terms with the mismatch of the number of vehicle movements that the parish council, in their doing their counts, have stated, and what appears to be, or the statements from Hall Hunter. And might I add that the large majority of the areas that would be disturbed by these vehicles is in Milford Parish, not in Buzzbridge Parish, because they get down to the station line and then turn right towards Milford, and that is, then, all of that is in Milford Parish. But we haven't got, I don't think, any representations from Milford Parish Council to this application, and the likely activity that's going to happen there with regard to traffic movements, if there was an increase. And of course, the assertion has been that there isn't going to be an increase in vehicle movement anyway, it's going to be a decrease. This farm has caused angst between the population, local population, and Tewesley Farm from the very start. I only wish and hope that we could have an amiable situation between the two, so that we can actually... they can get on with their work, and the parish council can feel content that what is happening is reasonable and necessary, and creating a successful business in their own community. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Vorjeski.
Thank you, Chairman. Much of the discussion that we've had regards confrontations in the past is not a material consideration when it comes to planning matter on this application. And trying to control traffic movements on a commercial site of this nature, I would seem virtually impossible. And as it's already been explained, the traffic movements will go down, not up. And the only effective means of controlling anything in this neck of the woods, if you want to do that, is to get the shopper not to purchase the goods in the first place. But in this case here, what we're seeing is a boom in business, and what I think we should be doing is embracing Tewesley Farm and what they do, support that they are an employer and provide local jobs. We need to be seen to be supporting our local economy, and we need to see that an economy on this scale in Waverley is a good thing, and we should be doing all we can to support it. So I wholeheartedly endorse the officer's recommendation this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Dinas.
It's a very quick point about vehicle movements. Obviously, with my own ward, I have large movements from Dunstfold Park, and I know how difficult it is to get the right information and to enforce, you know. So as much as I can understand where the parish council are coming from, and, you know, my local parish council have exactly the same views, it's extremely, extremely difficult to monitor twenty-four hours what exactly the movements are, whose vehicles they are, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's unenforceable, that request.
Thank you. councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very supportive of our farming community and the growing of crops, and also I think this would be very good for the economy of Waverley. Just one thing that I wondered if I could ask, the gentleman that was putting the... the applicant was saying that he was already talking to local community groups, and I wonder whether or not there is any possibility of perhaps putting in a condition that that liaison will form part of this application, perhaps? So that was my suggestion. Thank you.
I think we usually add that as an informative... Beth, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Whilst I completely appreciate the motives behind... Whilst I completely appreciate the motives behind that, I'm afraid, I mean, I don't think it would pass one of the six tenths because I don't think it's entirely relevant to the application. So I don't think we'd be able to defend imposing that sort of planning condition, I'm afraid.
Thank you, councillor Gray.
Just going back over what, I mean, I've got the same proposal as councillor Townsend. I think it would be wrong to totally ignore Busbridge's comments about traffic movement and not get to some situation where there is a voluntary declaration and discussion on this subject. I mean, if it goes in as an informative, I don't believe that that should cause us any technical points of view. A strong informative and an informative which perhaps we might take more notice of and another application comes through if it's not actually being adhered to. We can't enforce it, I accept that. But to make a strong voluntary obligation to do this, then I think it would be worth suggesting it. However, practically, having looked at it from Dunstfold Park's point of view, I wish you well because it's not easy to do it. It's got to rely on cooperation on both sides, goodwill on both sides. But I don't think we should be doing anything more because as councillor Vorjeski said, it's something we're proud of. We have to have jobs, we have to have economy, especially in these days at DNAs. But we've got to try and get them to talk to their local community and agree a way forward. So my suggestion is the same as councillor Townsend, a strong informative and seek cooperation.
You'd be happy with that, officers, yes? Okay. Councillor Stuart Dennehy.
Just a quick one, might explain Mr Byham's, councillor Byham's, on a movement. Just, we all need to be aware of the difference in numbers that they've come up with. A movement is in and out, is one movement. If a lorry goes in, it has to come out. And under operation laws and operators' licences, a movement is classed as in and out, as one movement. So that might be the difference.
Members, are you happy that we move to the recommendation? Thank you. So the proposal is the erection of an extension to chilled storage building and the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to eight and informatives one to six plus an additional informative regarding liaison with the local community, permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour, please?
Liaison and discussion on volumes, on traffic, not just general. That is what I believed we were doing.
All right, yes, officers, yes, okay. All right, so with that clarification by councillor Gray, all those in favour, please.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Sorry, that recommendation is agreed and we move on to the final item for our discussion on this committee, which is item B1, reference WA 2018 0600, land to the rear of 114 and 118 Horsham Road, Cranley. And I'll invite Chris to introduce this application.
Thank you, chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of two dwellings at the rear of 114 and 118 Horsham Road and the retention of 114 Horsham Road on a reduced curtilage. There are two updates to the report. Firstly, the site description has been added to the addendum, so you'll find that in your addendum pack. Secondly, there has been, attention's been drawn to the first paragraph on page 98, which should be amended to reflect the fact that the 2004 application was for three dwellings following the demolition of the existing building at the front of the site. Therefore, it's not a greater total number. This does not alter the conclusions which are reached within the report. I'll run through the details of the application. This is the location plan, the application sites outlined in red. The Horsham Road runs to the, runs to the north of the site and the red line site is the curtilage, it's a garden surrounding 114 Horsham Road. That's an aerial photograph of the site. You can see the, you can see the site is in the middle here and the garden that runs around to the, to the south. And this is the proposed site plan. There's a, these are the existing access and would, the access road would run down the side of 114 and then you'd have plot one on the left hand side and plot two on the, on the right hand side of that, of that layout. Also have noticed the depth of the neighbouring, neighbouring gardens, that substantial, they're set within substantial plots. And this is the floor plan for, for plot one. You can see that there are five, proposed to be five bedroom properties with a attached, attached garage and one of those bedrooms would be within the roof space. And these are the elevations for proposed plot one. It's a two storey dwelling with accommodation in the roof space and of a traditional, traditional form. And these are the elevations for the second plot and it's similar to, similar in design to the, to the first one and also includes accommodation within the roof space. And these are the floor plans for units, unit two, it's also a five bedroom, five bedroom property and is similar to unit one. We've got some photographs from the site. The photograph on the top left hand side there shows the existing access and the application property at 114. And if the photograph down the bottom is taken from the, from the back garden of 114 looking, looking into the, the area that's proposed for, for development, the, the area where the second goalpost is there is, is the location where plot one would, would be located. And these photographs are taken from the position of, of plot one looking across towards, you can see, you can see 1110 and 112 are located to the, located to, to the rear there. This is taken from the, from the other part of the, of the site where plot two, the curtilage for plot two is proposed and is taken quite close to the boundary, looking towards the, the rear garden of 118. The photograph on the right hand side is taken looking towards the, towards the development site, currently a comprehensive redevelopment is, is underway to the rear there. This slide splits the determining issues into matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment. In terms of the principle of development, the site is within the, within the settlement area and the principle is, is therefore accepted by officers. The impacts on parking, access and highway safety are accommodated within the site. And it's noted that there would be some trees that would be, be lost, however, that's not, not considered to outweigh the, the benefits of bringing, bringing forward the, the scheme. The matters of judgment are on the right hand side and a matter such as the impact on the character of the area and residential amenities. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Members, councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. We've looked at some very substantial applications this evening. What we've got here is a proposal for two very large properties that basically will impact on one residential property in the Horsham Road in Cranley. I do believe that by virtue of the height and mass of the proposed buildings, this will constitute an inappropriate and unnecessary backland development and is an overdevelopment of the site. The access to these two properties will create additional noise and disturbance and the access is onto the Horsham Road at a rather difficult position. This is a winding sort of country road and we're going to have additional properties coming out onto the Horsham Road from this site along with a significant number of other properties being developed elsewhere on the, on the road. Three applications relevant to this site have been considered in the past, they've been refused and refused at appeal. And I do think that the, the reasons that they were refused at appeal are still absolutely irrelevant. Cranley has already, or is already going to be recipient of a very high percentage of the additional houses, new houses required by Waverley. And as we have now met the five year housing supply, I think that we can and we must face up to our responsibility to protect existing residents and properties. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to agree with councillor Ellis. This is garden development and it is specifically meant to be protected under paragraph 70 of the NPPF. So plans should consider the case for setting out policies to resist inappropriate development of residential gardens and where it will cause harm to the local area. I think this does harm the local area. Officers' report, the bottom of page 98, talks about the impact on visual amenity and it seems to state that the Horsham Road, which is characterised by detached properties set within large plots and with a lot of mature trees, has now been altered in some way by the Crest Nicholson development. The Crest Nicholson development is on another road behind, although it affects the fields behind, it still does not affect the Horsham Road which comes into, one of the main roads into the village from the Horsham area, which does provide a very leafy, green roadway. As you can see on the officer's photos in the report of the road, you can see the, if we go to that one, you can see, there, back one, Chris, please, sorry. You can see that there, and another one, that one there. So you can see that there is a grass verges followed by mature trees. And this has not been affected by the Crest Nicholson development on the character of the Horsham Road itself. And there are no additional, it says that the recent developments have altered the character of development along the Horsham Road which has become additionally lined with housing to the south. The Horsham Road itself has not become lined with housing to the south, it is a development off of the Horsham Road and the introduction of two new units would follow this newly established pattern. I fail to see what the newly established pattern is, other than a pattern of garden infill. We also have the reasons originally for refusal and one of the main reasons for the original refusal was the danger on the road, Surrey highways. And it was said in the inspector's report that specifically that it would actually, one of the reasons was that it was considered to be dangerous to highway users and the inspector stated that the visibility to the east of the Horsham Road was substandard due to the bend in the road. The bend is still actually there and it seems to have been bypassed this time by using the existing actual driveway to the property. Well, that doesn't negate the bend in the road which is still there. So because there is no new access, we are now saying there's no problem. There is a problem, there will be additional car movements and it will cause additional highway problems on the road there. The other thing about, that seems to have been brushed over is the loss of the trees. Well, previously, Waverley refused the application on the grounds of loss of trees, it was one of the reasons. And this was considered to be seriously detrimental to the visual amenity and character of the area. And again, all of a sudden, circumstances may have changed, we have a five year housing supply though. Cranley has nearly met its target of 1700 houses and with the neighbourhood plan, we're already looking at allocating sites and we will have reached that target for, for Cranley of over 1700. So why all of a sudden the loss of trees is no longer detrimental in this area and why it doesn't affect the visual amenity and character of this area any longer, I'm really at a loss to know why that is. We also have comments from the Surrey Wildlife Trust and they particularly state that the, that they want to ensure that the proposed development does not result in a net increase in external artificial light because of the bats and the wildlife that use that area. I don't know how that's going to be achieved. How can we have no net increase in artificial external light when we're adding two great big huge properties in the back of the garden? The backs of these gardens on the Horsham Road have a lot of trees which provide a very, very important wildlife corridor. We have got no bat survey that accompanies this application. In fact, it was meant to be done between May and September but there doesn't appear to be one. If there is, you know, I stand corrected but I can't find one against the application. We are losing a lot of mature trees and whilst officers may consider that the odd tree here and there in backland development isn't impactful, it is when considered in the cumulative impact. We have already lost a load of trees down the, in this area, in, behind the Horsham Road from the development of the Crest Nicholson site. And the loss of more trees, particularly a very, very good specimen of a willow tree, I think it's not necessary. We don't need two more additional houses in this area. And finally, let me just have a look at my notes. I think that's it actually. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Vorjeski.
Thank you, chairman. I would like to wholeheartedly support what both my fellow colleagues have just said about this application. Cranley doesn't need it, it's, it's got enough and it certainly doesn't need this type and size of housing and in this location. There is just no requirement for this type. And I'm going to touch on something I said earlier about fitting into the local residents and amenities that are already there before these people, before these applications come along. And something Patricia had picked up on earlier, it's about protecting the existing residents. You know, we seem to have forgotten that they've been there a long, long time, enjoying these houses, enjoying their privacy, enjoying their way of life. And all of a sudden, it's going to be spoilt and it's going to be relatively deemed as okay because Crest Nicholson have had permission to have a huge development down the road. And it's not because we're setting precedents to say this is okay. And if I didn't know Liz better, I'd say that she came over here and had to look over my shoulder and look because I was absolutely going to say, it's, the effect on the trees, I mean, bleed, makes my heart bleed. You know, we, these trees, they, they grow for hundreds of years and then in hours they're cut to the ground. And we touched on earlier about, you know, it's a tree here, it's a tree there. It is not, you're absolutely right, it's a cumulative effect of the number of trees that we've lost just in Cranley alone. You know, the estates, the ancient woodlands that we've lost, pile them all up. I mean, it is just not good for our environment and it doesn't, it doesn't do us any favours at all. So to my colleagues, I absolutely agree, I cannot in any way, shape or form agree with the officer's recommendation. Again, I think it's just a gross overdevelopment of a site, totally inappropriate. And that's the last words from me this evening, chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dinas.
Thank you very much. Page 98 talks about land, house, house and land supply. And then it says, notwithstanding, this does not mean that otherwise acceptable development should be refused. Well, thankfully, I don't think this is acceptable, so that doesn't apply. If you look at the picture of the gardens, please, where it looks where the neighbours are. If you look at those pictures of both, both, of both those houses, that's fine now. But when it comes to the winter, when there's no leaves on the trees, that is going to be a straightforward look into the gardens. I think somewhere I read it was the curtilage will be within a one and a half foot of the boundary. I can't remember what page, I didn't write down, I think I'm correct on that, but please correct me if I, I'm not. And I think the officer said that the, the loss of trees was outweighed by the benefits of bringing forward this scheme. I have to admit, I cannot see how the loss of trees outweighs the benefits of having two massive houses. It doesn't ring true to me, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that. So I won't be going with the officers on this one.
Thank you. It actually reads one and a half metres as opposed to one and a half feet, so quite a big difference. a big difference. councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is difficult. To be able to refuse this on highway grounds, as has been suggested by one of my colleagues, I think is a non-starter. It may have been a reason for refusal last time, but when the highway authority are now saying no objection, I wouldn't want to be objecting on highway grounds for this one. But I have a question of the officers, because in, on page 98, under, in the last paragraph, they talk about a number of developments have approved in rear gardens of existing properties. There is then a quote of Crest-Nicholson, let's put that to one side. Have there been any others, and if so, how close are they, of permissions being granted for this sort of thing, a couple of houses in a, in a big garden? Because that seems to me more important than the Crest-Nicholson development elsewhere. I don't like garden-grabbing development of this sort. I suspect the owner, or the former owner of number 118, thought he was on to a good thing and must have sold his garden to the neighbour, and therefore one nearly feels, well, you know, if there's a house in this garden, tough, because he's sold his garden to enable it to happen. But we've got to look at it from a planning point of view, and if there aren't any backland developments in the reasonable facility similar to this, in size, you know, one, two or three houses in a back garden in this part of the road, then I would certainly feel that we are in a stronger position to refuse it. But if there are, forgetting Crest-Nicholson, if there are other developments where this has happened down this road, then I'm not quite so sure.
Thank you. councillor Stuart Stennett.
Thank you, Chairman. I visited this site earlier this week. The house 118, the people have lived in it, I think, for 25 or 26 years, so they haven't sold their garden off. I also stood in the middle of that field where the Crest-Nicholson site is, and I didn't support it, but the officers that was saying it should go through pointed out that the Horsham Road and the houses down the Horsham Road were screened by a lovely line of trees, and it would not be detrimental to them. And we're now saying we can get rid of these trees. Well, I fail to understand. Trees, oak trees take years and years and years to grow, and once you cut them down, they're gone. Even if you excavate around them, they're gone, because you damage the roots. I fail to see how we can say one thing for one development, and then because it suits, we can say another thing for another development. I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say that I, yeah, this to me looks like backland development. I don't know when backland development isn't backland development, but this looks like backland development. And at the top of page 99, it talks about architecturally the street scene of Horsham Road. Well, these are tucked away behind existing properties, so they're not affecting the street scene whatsoever, so I'm tending to go along with the rest of the members. Members, are you happy to move to the recommendation? Did you wish to speak?
councillor Byham. Chairman, could I have an answer to my question, which was whether there are any similar backland developments in the road, forgetting Crest-Nicholson? Of course.
Thank you, Chairman. We've been having a, having a, having a look at that point in terms of other, other buildings that are set, set back behind other, other properties, and apologies if it's not clear on, on the plan that I've got, but just off of the, off of the site, I think it's at 126, sorry, 124. And 126 do have, have examples of, of dwellings to the, to the back of the building line. And also, we, officers are of the view that the, you know, the Horsham Road development does also alter that, that, that character. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Byham.
What I was going to say was, again, on the practicalities, yes, the street scene won't change because the drive is offset and in front of, of one house, and there's trees right across the front of there, and therefore you're not going to see anything from the back or between those two houses. And what's that, when they sell that house, I know who owns the house, it is going to be, the garden is going to be developed, you then have a whole host of, there's two four-bedroom houses in the back, all those cars driving up their drive, with their lights shining into their homes in, out of, in darkness or whatever, traffic movements there, going through there. It's, it's totally impractical to have a drive like that, which is not even made up on the, on the photographs that we've seen, going between those trees in front of the house and then winding its way to the back. I mean, on the question of, of other developments, there was one in an adjacent road further back, I can't remember where, we, we actually fought very hard and actually refused it. And sad to say, the, the inspector seemed to have a requirement of a white stick because he didn't understand how it was impossible to go between two buildings and go to the back, and he actually granted permission. But that was for a single, single bungalow, not for two four-bedroom houses.
councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
Sorry, it was just really on the, one of the things that I wanted to find out was about the bat survey, because I can't see even on here any condition about the bat survey, and it should hopefully be a pre-commencement condition to, to have the, the bat survey carried out anyway. And I do think that the, the reason why the Surrey highways have not commented on the actual danger to the road is because, unlike the previous applications, this is using the existing driveway. And if you look at the red line boundary of the site that was the officers had up on the, on the actual presentation, it doesn't actually include the access on the other red line boundary. There's another red line boundary further on that one there. You'll see the red line, yeah, ooh, red line boundary does not include the front access of the site. So are we creating here, the design of this is that literally people are coming in, if you go back to the picture of the actual house itself with its driveway, people are driving in there and going past that front door and then going round the side of the house. And that is what we are proving here tonight. We are proving that design, whether or not it's highways, the actual design of it is that if young children are running out of that, front of that door, who live in that family-style home, they'll be running right out into traffic. Thank you.
Chris, you wish to comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of points that I can hopefully clarify. One, we've got a condition to do with the development being undertaken in accordance with the, with the preliminary ecological appraisal, which is condition six. So I think we're, we're covered in terms of the, the, that issue. The, the other point in terms of the access, the, the red line for the application site is, is the red line on, on this plan here, whereas I appreciate they've drawn a, a red line on the site plan, but the, the application site is what, yeah, is, is what, is what is in red on the location, location plan. And there's not an objection from, from the county highways authority on those, Chris.
Thank you. councillor Townsend.
Sorry, sorry to come back, Chairman. Just on condition six, can that be a pre-commencement condition perhaps? Just that's one query. And the other thing is, is that Surrey highways will not comment on private drives. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Stennett.
Just a quick point. The houses have been referred to by some of my colleagues as four-bedroom; they're actually five-bedroom, and they are actually two and a half floors. And the existing houses are one and a half floors, I think you'll find that. Number 118 is one and a half floors, and it would be very overbearing in size and bulk on that house. Thank you.
Members, are you happy to move to the recommendation? Right, so the proposal is for the erection of two dwellings and three garages as amended by plans received on the 28th of June 2018 and the 27th of July 2018, and the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 17 and informatives 1 to 5, permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour, please?
That's none.
And those against, please?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. Could I have a proposer and seconder that this, for the revised recommendation, please? Proposed by councillor Ellis, thank you. And seconded by councillor Townsend. Could I have reasons for refusal, please? councillor Townsend.
Can we have paragraph 70 of the NPPF? Can we have impact on the trees and the loss of the willow tree and the other trees as well? Can we have that it is something about the character, the impact on the character of the area? And also, can we include anything on the design of the access ourselves from a design point of view? I know that you're saying that we can't include it from a highways point of view, but can we have anything on the design?
please.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we could probably go down the line of the development, the, the use of the access, basically, the intensified use of the access would impact firstly on neighbouring amenity, and therefore would be contrary to policies TD1, D1, D4.
The, sorry, left my microphone on. The, the previous application, the reasons for refusals were harm to character and appearance of the area, including loss of trees, and harm to neighbours' living conditions in respect of noise, disturbance and outlook. So I think those will be.
Can we include light? Thank you.
Noise, disturbance and out, well, I would think that would be covered by disturbance, wouldn't it, really? So, officers, are we sort of happy with those? Or not happy, but. What we've, what we've discussed so far is paragraph 70 of the NPPF, harmful impact on trees, harmful to the character and appearance of the area, and the concerns about the access.
Chair, could I just?
Yes, please.
Make a point, please. Thank you. Just in terms of paragraph 70 of the NPPF, that refers to the setting out of policies to resist inappropriate development of residential gardens, and because we're determining a planning application, we consider that that wouldn't be relevant. It'd be more policy TD1, the local plan.
I'm sure it's included with all the discussions, but just to make sure, it's about the size, bulk, design and overbearing appearance. I'm sure that's worded within everything, but just to make sure that, that had come out. Thank you.
Any comments, officers, before we make the revised recommendation?
And just because there's been a, been quite a discussion on different aspects of it, is it worth me going through what I think we've?
Yes, please.
What I think we've got in terms of the, in terms of the reasons. I think there's a reason on, on kind of amenity. So the proposed development by reason of the increase in noise, disturbance, the, from the, from the new access and the impact on, due to the proximity to neighbouring properties in terms of overbearing impacts, would, would result in harm to neighbouring amenity, contrary to policy TD1 of the local plan, part one, and then it would be policies, retained policies D1, D4 of the local plan 2002, along with guidance within the NPPF. That's, that was one area that I thought was, was, was covered, and was there a second area in terms of character?
Were trees, well, I mean, previous refusals, the, were, one of the reasons was harm to character and appearance of the area, including the loss of trees. Whether that needs to be one condition in, one reason in these days or two, I don't know.
I think given its character and amenity, I would suggest potentially it'd be two, two different reasons.
Sorry. Beth.
And then finally, development via virtue of its bulk, mass, scale. Yeah. Is it both, both of those dwellings that you are? So the development as a whole? It's just neighbour. Is it the impact on the neighbouring properties, or do you want to specify which properties that it would impact on? Okay. Yeah.
The impact on residential amenity on page 99 says that the NPPF identifies within the overarching roles that the planning system ought to play a set core land use, planning use. Planning principles should underpin both plan-making and decision-making, and these 12 principles include that planning should seek to secure a good standard of amenity for all existing and future occupants of land and buildings.
Thank you, Chairman. In answer to the question earlier, I do think the impact would be particularly felt at Asgath, and Asgath has a particularly lovely tree that I think could be threatened by the proposed development, the building of it, the close proximity to it. And the tree I'm thinking of is in the property of Asgath.
Right, so how are we getting on with these reasons for refusal then? Could, could, could we have a precis of the reasons that we've agreed to so far? I mean, I've, I've got down here Paratidi 1 of the local plan, which covers size, bulk and overbearing, and access, the harm to the character and appearance of the area, and loss of trees. Yes? Agreed.
In that regard. And indeed, access within the site, it must, it must be compliant with all the safety guidelines that are currently relevant. Simply, my colleagues would not have accepted a design that was inherently unsafe. Well, will you? That's the point.
I, I think the concern was more about the access coming past the, the existing house, wasn't it? And, and being used by two extra houses, if they're five beds, they could have three or four cars a day going backwards and forwards.
Just quickly say that if you look at the line, the red line goes right beside Fairfield,
Please apologise to the central members on the way out, who, who've been waiting oh, about an hour and three quarters now.